Okay, so we will be calling the meeting to order at 7:03. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic of which it stands, or the nation in which it is, liberty and justice for all. Susan Delsa?
Here.
Matthew Buckley? Michael Lemsworth?
Here.
Patricia Koenigstein?
Here.
Michelle Kaiser? Erin Noah?
Here.
Jonathan Gerber?
Here.
Thank you. And everybody knows the exits there, there, up that way. At this time, I would like to take nominations for presidents of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
Nominate Matthew Buckley.
Matthew Buckley, is there a second? Are there any other nominations for president of the Board of Education? Okay, let's take a vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carried, seven zero. And now, Matt, I turn the meeting over to you. So you want to, you can come up here. Yeah. And I have, you have to take your oath. Just read that aloud.
I do, I, Matthew Buckley, do solemnly affirm and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of New York, the state of New York, and that I faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Board of Education of Greenwood Lake Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
And now...
The election of vice president, do I do that?
You do.
Now, the election of vice president, do I have a motion? Or do I have a nomination for the election of vice president?
Nominate Michelle Kaiser.
Is there a second to that nomination?
Second, Michelle Kaiser, if I started.
Is there any other nominations from the floor? Motion carries, Michelle Kaiser. Vice President. Can I, everybody?
Carried, seven zero. Congratulations, Michelle. You can read it aloud, and then I'll sign it.
I do solemnly declare that I support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education of Greenwood Lake Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
Number three, the Minister of Public and Cultural Office District Clerk.
I do solemnly affirm and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk to the Board of Education of Greenwood Lake Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
And now, Sarah. You do it too.
I do solemnly affirm and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools of the Greenwood Lake Union Free School District according to the best of my ability.
You guys come over and you line together for me. Okay, Mike, I think that's it, that's all.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board of education for education.
You already did theirs. I'll have to do it again because they just did it.
Agenda, number four, Board of Education appointments. Appointment of three board members for Board Audit Committee. We have three volunteers. Michelle. Mike. The third? All volunteers.
We don't have to vote, we don't have to vote on this part.
Four point zero, appointment of three board members to Facilities Committee. I have Sue.
All volunteer for Facilities as well.
Sean, Aaron?
Yep. Appointment of three board members for Budget Committee who have three volunteers. Sue, Aaron. Appointment of three board members for Policy Committee. Is that what I said earlier? Anybody else? Please shout.
Mike Emsworth.
Okay, no sense, there's another guess. For policy?
Appointment of board member for liaisons to Chester and Warwick School Boards. I was the one for Chester. Does anybody else would like to take that? Warwick School Board? Aye. Four point zero six, appointment of board members to OXPBA. Sue. And I'm heard all today. Appointment of board members to NISBA is had in meeting. Voting delegation, all today. Sue, and I'm, if someone else wants to be part of that?
The alternate goes to vote if I can, if the board member can't vote. About four hours long. We all have one.
Sue, aye. Four point zero eight, appointment of board members to NISBA's Legislative Liaison and all today.
Want to leave it? We have it. If you don't want to, you don't take that.
You can take that. And now we're going to five, this is consent, consent agenda vote. This is five point zero one. Six point five two. I get a motion to accept the consent agenda. Sue. Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried, seven zero. June fourteenth. Another June fourteenth. June twenty-second, June thirtieth, and July sixth. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes for those meetings? Phil, second? Sue, all in favor? Aye. Motion carried, seven zero. Number four, correspondence to the board. Five, statements and presentations to the Board of Education.
Good evening, Board of Education members. Superintendent's report this month will be somewhat brief, as it is the summer, but I did want to share a couple of pictures from our summer academic program. The Summer Skills Builder and the Bridge into Kindergarten programs kicked off last week at both of our schools, and our teachers have been planning. I've seen some fun, creative lessons, and we are reinforcing both the English Language Arts and the math skills each morning. The program runs Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Over here, we have our kindergartners, and here we have some of our older students. Summer transportation, typically we do not provide transportation for regular students during the summer. However, Warwick High School, some of our Warwick High School parents requested that we provide transportation to Warwick High School this summer for credit recovery purposes, specifically due to the COVID pandemic. This was discussed at a board meeting recently, and the board at that time decided to go ahead and explore it, knowing that we would need a minute, deciding that we would need a minimum of five students participating in order to make it worthwhile. We do have eight students that have taken advantage of this, so we have provided, started providing that transportation this week. Again, this is pandemic-specific transportation, and during a typical summer, that responsibility would fall to the parent. We are hiring for several positions this summer, and I just wanted to give the board an update on what positions we're hiring for and, you know, the processes that we're going through. We have an opening for a special education teacher. We had one of our teachers resign. The PPS secretary, the board, at a few meetings ago, decided to move forward with a full-time position, so we are going through the civil service process to hire that person. One of our bus mechanics resigned their position, so we are currently in the search for a new bus mechanic. I do believe we have found a candidate for that, though, so I expect that to be on the next board agenda. We are in the process of looking for a new middle school principal. We have a part-time food service helper that we're looking for. On tonight's agenda, there is a leave replace, leave extension for one of our elementary school teachers, so we are looking to hire a leave replacement from the beginning of the year through January. And then also, we are looking at possibly hire, likely needing to hire a new teaching assistant. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about that, because this would be an added position into the budget that was not originally in the budget. And the reason for this is we have a new student moving into district that has, on the IEP, a requirement for a teaching assistant position. Teaching assistants, we kind of have two types here in district. There are some teaching assistants that are required, or as in special ed terms mandated. Some IEP students and some 504 students have this requirement of a teaching assistant. It could be for medical needs, behavioral, supplemental, academic, testing accommodations, et cetera. Also, when a, also just regular classroom support, so if there is a special class, and it is a, let's say, a 12-1-1, that represents 12 students, one teacher, one teaching assistant. So those classrooms have to have a certified teaching assistant in it all day. When a student is assigned a one-to-one TA, oftentimes, it's minute for minute the entire school day. So when that teaching assistant has to go on breaks or on lunch, we have to put another teaching assistant in that person's place to make sure that we're meeting the students' required accommodations. So that's another, covering breaks may seem a little bit fluff, but it's not, it's actually very necessary to make sure that we have the right amount of coverage for students. Then we have what I call programmatic teaching assistants. Those are not mandated, but they are important for the continuity of instruction and the continuity of our programs. So for example, in primary grades, kindergarten, first grade, we will often put a teaching assistant in to assist the teachers with running the classroom. Often in kindergarten, we have students that have never been in school before, and they need help sitting, or tying their shoes, or holding a pencil, and there's just one teacher and too many hands, too many heads in the room. So we'd like to give them as much support as we can. And then also, not a happy place for students, but in-school suspension is another part of how the school building runs, and someone has to be there to watch over the students. So if a student gets placed in in-school suspension, we have a teaching assistant that staffs that room. We usually combine the in-school suspension role with the person, the same TA also provides testing accommodations to kids. So a child may go to that room to have a test read to them, and then they go back to their classroom. In this case, the student that moved in, they have medical, and they need some monitoring for health and safety during the day. Again, so it would be an added position, but we believe it is necessary. We had an admin meeting today where we reviewed all our current teaching assistants, as well as the roles that they fill. We did try to see if we could use a current person or shift some responsibilities, and based on the mandated times, as well as our programmatic requirements, we really do need this added position. So we are going to look forward, move forward with interviewing for this position and creating it. Hiring someone in August, we're hoping to. Would like further discussion on that before we move forward. New York State and New York State Department of Health COVID guidance, I thought maybe I'd have one meeting where I didn't have to talk about COVID, but this one was a good one. So for the summer program, the New York State Department of Health came out with guidance last week that said that masks can be optional for students. It is strongly encouraged, but they can now be optional for students. Again, it is specific to the summer program, it does not apply to the regular school year. And then in terms of staff, or the teaching staff, if a staff member is vaccinated, the mask is optional. If they are not vaccinated, they must wear a mask. This was communicated both to staff and to the families of the students participating. And we only, we received one letter back from parents saying they wish for their child to still continue wearing the mask. They said that won't be a problem, so. For the terms of the 2021-22 school year, we do expect new guidance over the summer. We are really hoping to have it by the end of the month so we can plan the school year. I will say that we are planning our school year as a regular school year. So one of the things that we did in our admin meeting today is we sit and looked at the 19-20 calendar, and we made dates for all of the events that we weren't able to have last year. So we have a date for Back to School Bash, we have a date for concerts, we have a date for open houses, and the STEAM Fair. We are preparing for this year to run as normal as possible, and then if we need to pull back from there, we will, but we want to make sure we have a plan if we can. The C, just so everyone is aware, the CDC quietly did release updated guidance this past Friday, saying that masks indoors should be optional for vaccinated students. New York would need to adopt this. They would, there is a lot of discussion out there about this new guidance, and whether it's the right thing or the wrong thing for schools, we will see what New York State has to do with that. New York State, as of late, has just said, "We follow the CDC guidance," but we don't know what they'll actually do. So we can't change what we do until the New York State Department of Health says we can. That is who is over us and makes our decisions for us. And then I've had a couple of questions from families about remote instruction, and what I'm hearing, and what's being hinted at at the state level, is that remote instruction would only be provided when medically necessary for the individual child. So an illness in the household, or in someone that's susceptible in the household, would not be a reason that a child would need to be, receive remote instruction. It would only be that child itself. We already do have a successful process as a part of our CSC department that Amy Petrazzi oversees, and in terms of deeming when children are medically in need of remote instruction or different, different instruction. So the superintendents as a whole are hoping that New York State Education Department will move forward with that process, but again, that's to be determined. So a lot still up in the air, lots of rumors going around, and we will just continue to wait for the guidance as we have all year long. Questions about any of those? That's it in terms of my presentation. Thank you.
Much? Board member? Board member reports. District liaison reports. Esther? So I enjoyed that, that's what I got for Chester. Does anybody have anything for Warwick? NISBA Liaison Report.
NISBA is hearing up with their resolutions, asking school districts for landing last-minute resolutions for the October business meeting, and doing their summer legislative talks. OXPBA hasn't met.
OXPBA, Sue?
They have not met.
Facilities Committee Report.
They did not meet in July.
Audit Chairperson Report.
We met yesterday morning, and Anne just gave us an update on the state audit. I think it's, it's on the agenda for her to talk about. But basically, you know, we're doing pretty good as far as auditing goes, no discrepancies. We've been discrepancy-free for almost about four years, so I'd like to thank Anne for all her hard work, you know, managing our money.
Budget Committee Report.
Budget Committee doesn't meet until December.
Policy Committee Report.
We are anxiously awaiting our next section. Ari, get our next section.
PTSA Liaison Report. Does anybody hear from the PTSA? Villages of Grimley Liaison Report. I would say, I know there's a Chamber of Commerce soiree at the beach right now. Number six, Board of Education Discussion Topics. Security Philosophy. I'm going to hand that over to Sarah for that.
So I was asked by the board to just review our security and policing history of decisions and philosophies of the board, and as well as review the costs associated with those, and then to allow for a board discussion and follow-up questions, if you had any, and moving forward with different parts of that philosophy. So during the school day, we have two types of security in place. We contract currently with Briger Security. Up until this past year, we are, have currently gone out, we are now out for an RFP, for a new three-year contract, or five-year, five-year contract with a firm. The responsibility of the, of the security employee that we contract with is they monitor the entrance to the building, they greet all visitors and scan their ID through the Raptor system, communicate, monitor with the police depart, with the police, with the principal of the building, and they have the camera feed of the entire building up on their desktop at all times, monitoring for safety, the movement of people through the building, as well as the, as well as outside the building. So they are our eyes in the sky, so to speak. During the school day, we also have the police departments. The middle school has Warwick Police, is in Warwick's jurisdiction, so we contract with Warwick Police Department for the middle school. The elementary school is in Greenwood Lake's jurisdiction, so we contract with Greenwood Lake Police Department for that. The police officer walks the building, they walk inside the building, outside of the building, they, depending on the school, go out, up here at the middle school, they go outside at recess and monitor the children at recess, kind of keep an eye on the woods to make sure no one's coming out of the woods, or coming, because this campus is a little bit more accessible from hidden areas. At the elementary school, the security guard goes out to recess, and then the police officer covers the guard desk during the recess time. Mission there, Mr. Jamie does a wonderful job and really knows all the kids' names and knows the parents and things, too, so kind of knows what immediately, what's a threat, what's potential threat, who's a parent, who he knows. Quickly assess that, because that building's playground is right at the street level, so very accessible from the public. And then they do fill building sweeps of our external doors, and they check for individuals before their end of shift every day. So that is during the school day what we have in place. In terms of armed, having armed police officers at other times, the, we have someone here, really, anytime the students are present. So before and after-school clubs, sports games, and all evening events, concerts, open houses, STEAM Fair, any evening events, we have an armed police officer. And in addition to that, at all Board of Education regular business meetings, we have a police officer at the front door to let the public in and kind of monitor the Board of Education meetings. In terms of what does that cost the district? I asked Assistant Superintendent LaRoe to give a three-year history of this, because it has been such a whirlwind the past two years, so you'll see that 19-20 numbers are much lower, and that's because we essentially stopped in March, and so those numbers were very low and wouldn't really give us a good two-year average. This past year was also not normal, because we didn't have a lot of after-school events. We didn't have sports until the winter sports, we didn't have sports the first half of the year. We didn't have after-school clubs or before-school clubs, we didn't have evening events. We only really had the during the school day stuff. So that, I also knew that number was not going to be exactly representative, so I asked Anne to go back three years, and you'll see an average of what that security costs the school district. The Briger Security Services, it's important to know, that is for two people, that is the cost of two people, whereas this is one person, and this is one person. So talking points for the board tonight, for things that you may want to consider, is the cost of Briger, or whoever answers the RFP and comes back at the lowest responsible bidder, versus hiring a security aide through civil service. I would want to point out that if we were to hire through civil service, there are rules with civil service that we must follow in terms of who we can hire, and that would be salary plus benefits, so that would be a minimum of $60,000 to $70,000 per person, So that would be a minimum of sixty to seventy thousand per person, whereas we currently pay about seventy-five thousand for two people. And that's because the individuals through the service that we hire are retired police officers. They have years of experience, they have years of training, uh, but they are retired, so they are restricted on how much they're allowed to earn. Whereas, um, security aide, this would be a part of their career for them, so. Um, and then you may want to also discuss police presence at after-school events, police presence at, presence at evening events, and police presence at board meetings. Um, so at this time, I turn it back over to you. Uh, with this information, I can scroll back and forth through these slides if you guys have any questions or, um, we can try to.
Is there any discussion on this topic?
I, it's, with, in this day and age, I mean, I think, um, you know, all these talking points are up there. I, I think you really need police presence at all of these just for security, for not only the students, but also teachers that may be in the building or parents. Um, I would like to, to see the RFP, um, that is sent out just to see, you know, possibly if there is another security firm out there besides Briger. But I mean, I think we should, you know, keep, uh, police presence and the, the security uh, separate. And I, I think we should also stick with the security company versus going with the individual civil service hire.
With, um, RFP. If we change, um, through an RFP to a different company, uh, we would potentially lose Jamie and all of his assets that he brings us.
So I believe the last time that we switched companies, we had as a part of our voting to them that they needed to hire our people.
Okay.
Last time when we switched companies. Jamie and Goss have time moved. Is that correct?
This company was bought up, up and when it changed to Briger. And so they were already in the company when we last saw our people. But we could qualify that, that they would bring our new, our existing staff. We could put that as a qualification.
If, if they so chose to. If they in the middle chose to.
Okay. Um, I just want to add that, uh, at one point, we did not have police presence at board meetings. Probably maybe eighteen, nineteen. We had locked doors and we had a staff member at the door. Police presence is a little bit better, uh, just because there, if somebody came in, the building is still safe. They're, they're watching. That was our concern, that and why it switched to police presence. Plus, we'd like to get back to some student. Student activity again. Maybe.
Any ones?
Uh, summary that I got out of, out of that is, keep it as is. And if you do find a smaller or less costly, um, security company, that our decision would be to have Jamie. This Jamie retiring.
Um, I cannot discuss.
So if you make that a sticking point, also.
Understood, so I will take that into consideration.
Yes, I would say that's our stipulation. Keep it safe. As I've done. Everything else stays the same.
Thank you.
Uh, number s. Number seven, public statements and petitions. Probably it's up the floor. Do we have?
Yes, I'd like to speak. But I just want to make sure I can be heard. Can I use one of your microphones?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Hi, my name is Amy Bellantoni. I've been a teacher here for twenty years and I'm a community member. Do I only have a three minute?
Amy.
Great, thank you so much. Hi, my name is Amy Bellantoni. I've been a teacher here for twenty years and a community member in Greenwood Lake for twenty-four. Um, I have just a quick few things here. Um, first of all, did we ever come up with, uh, what we were going to do with the sign? That's one question I have. The next one is, I suggest a committee with the faculty members and, uh, members of the Board of Ed. Um, there's obviously, uh, we need more transparency due to us losing, you know, a beloved principal that we had for four years. It's heartbreaking to think that going in in September without Mr. G going to be here. So I think there should be more transparency. Um, I'm not talking about a Google Doc that comes out to the staff members to answer questions. I'm talking about we sit down and we talk. Um, my next question is, uh, there was a meeting June thirtieth and there was an addendum to an administration contract for the contract for the year before. So do I have to foil that information to find out what the addendum was on June thirtieth? I mean, I wasn't publicly announced that that meeting was going to happen or I would have attended it. Um, yeah.
So yes, uh, do you submit your questions to Sarah?
Okay, so Sarah does the foiling? Okay, and how long, how, how long is the time?
It's not a foil process, but your questions, so we answer all your questions.
Okay. Um, also, Matt, congratulations on your new position and welcome to everybody else that's on the board. But, um, I'll go sit down and you can tell me, I guess, the other two questions that I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else for, probably it's up the floor? All right, thank you for that. Uh, new business, item number eight. Financial reports and warrants. Can I get a motion to approve the financial reports for June 2021 as presented? Michelle? Sue? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Eight point two. Appointment of Social Studies Committee. Can I get a motion to appoint Alyss, Allison Chapman to Social Studies Committee as presented? Michael? Michelle, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Eight point three, establish school lunch prices. Can I get a motion to establish school lunch prices as presented? John? Patty? All in favor? Aye. I keep forgetting discussing after these motions. I'm sorry, I did that. Be better as we go along. Uh, eight point four, approved disposal of obsolete equipment and items. Can I get a motion to approve disposal of obsolete equipment as presented? Aaron? John? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Any discussion on that topic? Subject eight point five, approve rates tutoring and substitutes. Can I get a motion to approve the substitute rates as presented? Michelle? Patty? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Any discussion on that topic? Eight point six, execute agreement Decker Tree Service. Can I get a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute an agreement with Decker Tree Service as presented? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Any discussion on trees? Eight point seven, approve health services contract with Tuxedo Union Free School District. A motion to approve health services contract with Tuxedo Union Free School District as presented. Can I get a motion? Michelle? Sue? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Any discussion? Eight point eight, execute agreement with color palette. Can I get a motion to authorize superintendent to contract with color palette as presented? Can I get a motion? Michael? John? Any discussion on this topic? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Nine point one, approve leave of absence extension. Can I get a motion to approve the extended leave absence of Samantha Hayek as presented? Can I get a motion? Michelle? Mike second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Nine point two, appointment of register. Can I get a motion to appoint Teresa Finn as register as presented? Michelle? Sue? Any discussion on this topic? Favor? Motion carries seven zero. Nine point three, appointment of health insurance portability and accountability act stipend. Can I get a motion to appoint health insurance port, portability and accountability act stipend to Teresa Finn as presented? Mike? Michelle? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Nine point four, appointment for substitute caller. Can I get a motion to appoint Loretta Proll as substitute caller as presented? John? Sue? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Can I get a, nine point five, appoint data protection officer. Can I get a motion to appoint Susan Lapree as data protection officer as presented? Sue? Michelle? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Nine point six, appoint part-time speech therapist. Can I get a motion to appoint Lauren Graff as part-time speech therapist as presented? Sue? Mike? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Nine point seven, appoint substitute school male courier. Can I get a motion to appoint Jose Morales as substitute school male courier as presented? Sue? Patty? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Nine point eight, appoint APR certified evaluators of teachers. A motion to appoint APR certified evaluators of teachers as presented. Can I get a motion, please? Sue? Mike? Any discussion on this topic? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Nine point nine, appoint APR certified evaluator of administrators. Can I get a motion to appoint APR certified evaluator of administrators as presented? John? Mike? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Number ten, accept consent agenda. A motion to accept the entire consent, entire consent agenda according to recommended action. Can I get a motion? Sue? Patty? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Number eleven, new business consent agenda items. Oh, that was all part of that, sorry. Twelve? Committee on Special Education, preschool special education. A motion to accept CSE recommendations as presented. Mike? Michelle? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thirteen, proposed executive session. Can I get a motion for, uh, Ma? Yes. Do I get a motion first? We are entering Board of Education Executive Session minutes for the reason of the employment history of a particular person or persons. Can I get a motion, please, to go into executive session? Sue? Michelle? Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. No, there'll be no action taken during executive session at this time. After executive session. Seven fifty-one, we, executive session. At seven fifty-one. Thank you.